I'd like to call the board meeting to order. If you have a moment of silence. Last one.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of this board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Rule call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Stovitch.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Draggensen. Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Markward. Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Rokano. Mrs. Lockwood.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. The interim superintendent's report, Dr. Fenari.
Thank you, Mrs. Lockwood. This evening, I'm going to begin with a report that's from our Academic Success Committee, so I'm going to ask Mr. Strians to come up and join me at the podium, and we'll begin the presentation.
Okay. All right, so thank you, everyone. The presentation that we are making this evening is the culmination of quite a lot of work by a number of our high school staff members and Mr. Strians, who led the committee. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Strians, and I'll pitch him when necessary.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just to highlight, these are our committee members that worked on this throughout the year. Our Academic Success Committee, what we try to do is make a commitment to aligning with the strategic plan goals. The committee met numerous times throughout the year through the customary school rankings, reporting tools, program alignment, scheduling improvements, assessments, and a variety of other stuff that was important to the high school. So we kind of met with a wide breadth of stuff. Picking up on last year where we kind of started last year focusing on school rankings and kind of broadened that this year. The work accomplished this school culminates from model success, which consists of five strands that will be implemented simultaneously or delay groundwork for the attainment of our goals. These strands are aligned with specific strategic action plan goals, indicators, as I said, with school rankings, U.S. News and World Reports, and the ranking system. This is an example of our model for success. Pathways of graduation, additional credits, data-driven decision-making, communication, public relations, block scheduling, and professional development. Pathways of graduation, additional credentials. This is aligned with our strategic plan, goal 1.3A. You can see all the rest of them, I'm not going to read them. School rankings there address the college readiness, college curriculum breadth, and graduation rate. One was to celebrate our comprehensive high school by highlighting its unique features. We're one of the few schools that still has, offers shop and auto shop. Very, very, there's very, very few schools that still offer auto shop and graphic arts as well. We're one of the few. Identifying pathways to graduation to expand opportunities for students to earn both there. High school diploma and additional credits for college credit. Examples are graphic arts, user computer science, programming, automotive, tomorrow's teachers, biomedical engineering, and design, dual enrollment classes in our A.T. courses as well. Continue to use Navions in support of planning students' future. That's where all those kids' college stuff, where they communicate with the counselors, and then everything that's put in there where teachers do recommendations and stuff can get uploaded into the Common App. So it communicates very well. Our Highlander Academic and Career Readiness. The HACCr programs at West Milford are specifically designed to set curricula for highly motivated students that seek academic challenges with specific focus of study and dedicated faculty that engage students with not only enlightenment but also the real-world relevance. HACCr curricula devise around a set of common themes including collaboration, problem-solving, critical thinking, research, technology. These represent hallmarks of modern 21st century education, preparing students not just for college but also life beyond. With teachers using creative and innovative approaches to lessons, students will be engaged in their studies, will analyze information from multiple perspectives, and will be capable of developing solutions in the real world. This is an example of the traditional pathway at the high school. Students have to earn 125 credits in the various courses. This is an example of additional pathways. So you have your traditional pathway with tomorrow's teachers. Those students take child development, and then tomorrow's teachers as seniors, that's a dual enrollment class through Rider University. Traditional computer science program. List of classes that they can take there. I want to thank Mr. Novak because he was able to get us the grant for we have cybersecurity next year. So thank you for that. And our traditional with automotive is our automotive classes, which go all the way up to Auto 4. We did have students take ASE certification two years ago. It's automotive service excellent. That's if you're going to be mechanic, if you're ASE certified. It's, that basically says you're really serious about auto mechanics. And if you go to any dealership or stuff, you'll see a sign on the wall there, ASE certified mechanics. That's a shop you're going to want to go to that has that. Traditional visual graphic arts. Our list of classes are up there. And then dual enrollment was at Ramapo College as well for digital art. I want to go back to, we are trying to get auto dual enrollment with the Passaic Community College as well. Our decision-making is data-driven, aligning with the strategic action plan again. School rankings, we address data assessment, proficiency state assessment performance, and underserved student performance. Local and state assessments, diagnostic and formative summatives. Departmental approach and common assessments. Just about every department now is doing a common assessment, something that the supervisors work really hard on this year. Analysis of quantitative data using a dashboard tool like Linkit that houses all our students' test scores in there so people can refer to it to see where their strengths and weaknesses are and drive instruction that way. Analysis of qualitative data through use of need assessment surveys in students, staff, and parents. Analysis of metrics and program outcomes, including extracurricular programs, athletics, clubs, and activities. I, Mr. Trinidad Costa does a great job of tracking what activities and clubs and sports that our students are doing so that he can keep the enrollment up, and he does a great job of promoting those and also seeking students, recruiting students, to keep those going as well. These are our data system. Making is Linkit, which is, as I said, is our warehouse that houses all our data. Surveys provide qualitative and quantitative data for us to use. And our Navions, which I spoke about before, is for college and career readiness readiness that houses, that's where the teachers put all their letters of recommendation, and they can go out to the colleges that the students apply for through the Common App. Communication and public relations aligning again with our strategic action plan. School ranking areas addressed, our annual state of the school report each spring. Our branding plan expansion. Strategic use of infographics, branded reports, school websites, social media, light exposure of informational and event videos. Our TV science, Mr. Jordan does a great job. They pretty much stream just about everything that we have. If we have an event at school, they're live streaming it. Mr. Jordan's done a great job and has actually reached out to Macabre as well as a TV science program there. They come over to the high school, and they've actually broadcast stuff here at the middle school as well. Centralized use of social media improvement and reach school initiatives, news, et cetera, through tools such as Thrill Share and the district website. I believe there's a possibility that we're going to Thrill Share. I'm not 100% sure. So we are, so I think that will change on our website. So, which basically what Thrill Share does is, it gathers everybody's, basically everybody could post in one area and it sends it out. It's probably the simplest way, I can see it through one source so everybody sees it rather than having different posts all over the place. Our annual state of the school report. This is just an example of the high school's progress and goal payment areas contained in the report. Be student achievement, exam results, classrooms and sex stories, challenges faced, action plans, teacher and student support programs, school data and statistics, program overview, and just general information, future goals, parent community involvement. The report kind of intended for our school is the committee to know about what's going on at the high school besides what you're seeing here on a daily basis. Communication and public relations. Why are we going to use infographics? They quickly communicate our message. It's a simple presentation of data. It makes information present, memorable, and eye-catching and communicating using the district's branding plan. West Milford profile is supportive, and I have an example of it, I'll show it in a minute. Leads the reader to what they want to see and draws us to the data and the information that we have. This would be an example of an infographic for the high school which tells our enrollment, test scores, graduation rate. It can vary from many things, national, you know, state school character, things like that. What kids are taking, who's, how much has gotten accepted into college, things like that are just an example of what you could put in a report like that. Okay, block scheduling. This addresses our strategic action plan and also part of our school rankings. The block scheduling is going to allow us to offer more. So in order to do that, we need to work with Macabre's academic committee as well because we share teachers back and forth, so it's important we're on the same schedule. And by having a block schedule in the middle school, it would get them ready for the high school as well. I believe it was in 2018 we did extensive visits to schools to see different types of schedules. We have all that data still. We saved from those years back, and it kind of just, with COVID, went by the wayside. So we're kind of getting back to that, to where we were. We want to backwards map our plan for the creation and implementation of a block schedule for the '25-'26 school year. We need to address curriculum instructional needs, obviously operational needs, and financial needs as well. The purpose of these schedules is to manage the use of time in order to create an optimal frame within and execute a multifaceted plan. The creation and implementation of an alternative schedule must accommodate current programs and be flexible enough to allow future growth. There's a ton of different blocks there that are out there. Some of them are really, really, I'll be honest, they're really, really confusing. But that's all the different types of block schedules you could have. Drop block with a skinny really old, it's a block schedule, and then what a normal day attached to it. Why they call it a skinny, I don't know what that's, that's really what it is. So you'd have your block, and then one day you'd have your normal straight schedule. Okay, the three-year implementation plan. '23-'24, the Academic Success Committee was probably about mid-year and asked to start looking at block scheduling, so we started to do that and go back to the data we had from 2018 and years ago. And most of those people on the committee were here when we did that years ago. So we all had the notes and started going back and looking at the needs, and things have changed. You know, the high school's changed since back then. But next year, we need a needs assessment survey, collaboration, do some more school visits. Education operations and facilities, you know, communication and what we're going to do, be open and honest in what we're thinking and how we're going to try to do it, and just listen to people and take people's input. And then later, '25-'26, run the block schedule, monitor it, see what works, what doesn't work. Like when you do something new all the time, you're going to have your successes and failures. And at the end of the year, look back and how we can make it better. This, I put an example of a block schedule in here just so you can kind of see what it is. This is just an example. This is, I'm not saying this is what exactly we're going to do, but this is a four-day with a drop. So you, so you basically have four periods in the morning, four periods in the afternoon, so the kids can take eight periods. You drop one in the morning, and you drop one in the afternoon. So that's why on the first day, you see one, two, three. You don't see four because that's the period you drop. Then you see five, six, seven, and you drop period eight, and then it rotates. One of the things we want to address was our kids can't take everything they want. This gives them eight periods to take classes so they can, right now, they can take seven. And it keeps everybody lunch, not all our kids get lunch. Sometimes they want to take a class, and they're giving up the lunch, or, or, for example, lab might come out of lunch for some of the kids. That won't, that won't have to happen because we'll marry a laptop if he's taking less. So that's, that's an advantage. And then the whole, and then everybody would get a lunch at the same time. The periods would increase by 10 minutes, so we go from 45-minute periods to 55-minute periods. There are some things we would have to look at. For example, tomorrow's teachers, because they meet with those students specifically usually Wednesdays, Thursdays, so if they, if they drop, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have that. So we have an idea for them for that. And there's just some things like that also. Auto lab would be the same. So we would have, the option for that is when their auto period matches up with lunch. They would, that's what they do now is they give up after lunch, and then that's where they get their extra auto so that we could do something that way. So those are, that's just an option, an example of a type of block schedule. Mawa High School runs this block, and our day is actually, our day matches up really well. They start 15 minutes later, and then they go 15 minutes later. Our day is actually three minutes longer than theirs is. So it was just, and their demographics, they have a, they have a shop, they have a good band, so all those things, they kind of, they matched up well with us. So that was kind of why we looked at that. It was one of the reasons why we looked at that schedule. Professional development. The school rankings address the college curriculum breadth and graduation rate. So designing a block scheduling, teaching in the block. I went to a seminar this year about, about block, and I thought, I thought it was going to be how to come up with a block, how to make a block schedule. It really was for teachers, teaching in the block. So I got the gentleman's contact, and he would be a great resource for our teachers to use because it basically tells you how, how to break up, there's all different ways, multitude of ways you can break up your, your class to teach in a block. Database decision-making and creating common assessments, which I talked about, our dual enrollment programs, advanced placement, and teacher training. Model for success. The efforts described are intended to serve our students through, throughout their high school career while providing them with tools for their future success. Celebrate the uniqueness of our comprehensive high school. Partner with colleges, universities, local, state, and national organizations and other entities so that our students have an expansive high school experience. Share the story of West Milford's programs accomplished to the wider community. Is there any questions? Yes, Mrs. Dwyer.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Strians. I think it's a wonderful report. But I would have liked to see, statistically, I would have liked to see some data as to how we compare with districts that are similar to ours. And if we are weak in certain areas, what are those areas, and how are they going to be addressed? The other concern I have is how is this going to affect the students at Highlander Academy?
They have, they're going to run, they have to run a block too because we share.
Okay.
I kind of consider them half of the high school, so whatever we do, they, they do. Because we have, most of them are shared days with us, and the goal is to get them full days to the high school so that we have to run the same schedule. I should, I probably should have told you that, but I'm telling you now.
Thank you.
Can you say it?
First, I'd like to say, hello? All right, I'll just tap the talk loud. First, thank you, Dr. Fenari, for sticking to the strategic plan and making it a core feature going throughout this school year. Thank you so much. The question that, and thank you to the committee for continuing this process. I think this is going to be great. My big thing that I'd like to see more of in the future, obviously not tonight, is what is going to be in the needs assessment? Who are the stakeholders in the needs assessment? And will, how much of a focus will be on the students taking that needs assessment in order to understand what they need? That was just a point. I don't even know if that was a question. Hey, you can go back to film, but let me know.
I took it as a point, so.
Just to kind of talk on, talk a little bit to your point, Mr. Stovitch. The committee was very, they really wanted to make sure that everything that had been discussed this year is able to be shared with students, parents, staff. And that's what the year in between, you know, we had the now, next, and later. So that year, it's intended to make sure that all of the stakeholders have the opportunity to share important information, not only about the block but about the pathways. How, you know, are they, are they being implemented with fidelity in a way that our students are attracted to them? And then the other thing is, and we talked about this all the time, that a schedule is a framework of time that's supposed to support your vision and mission. So the schedule that gets built has to be able to accommodate all of the pathways that have been identified, all of the needs that have been identified. And by tying all of that together, the committee and the administration are really committing themselves to making sure that the data that you're talking about, and you know, when we talked about database decision-making, it's really about the things that you're asking for. And so, you know, that's, that's part of the plan. And I wanted to make sure that I made sure that.
Okay, Ms. Dwyer.
Great presentation. I have a question about the infographics. Are those current numbers, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And I can't, I just can't read it on the screen, or am I, 59, the second one on the right down? What does that say? 59 higher level, oh, courses? Meaning that we offer 59 higher-level courses? I just wasn't sure what that meant, what that meant.
Yeah, I think it's combining AP honors and adding those.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I just want to once again thank Mr. Strians and his committee. They were very gracious in letting me crash their meetings this year. And it really was great to have a conversation with people who are so committed. So thank you to all of the committee members and to the administration for all your hard work.
Is this handout available to the public if they wanted one? Is this handout available to members of the public if they wanted one? Okay, we don't have copies of it tonight, though. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, the next part of the superintendent's report is going to focus on our update to the strategic plan. For those of you who may not be familiar with the process, this year, we were able to take the goals and objectives that were developed two years ago by the district as part of a strategic planning process, as well as the year-one activities that were accomplished in order to put dates and responsibilities and, you know, different aspects of the plan so that we had some real hard data to take a look at. So in November, I believe, we presented the framework for this strategic plan action plan. And I'm going to ask Mr. Novak and Dr. Ressa and Mr. Schultz to once again join me in this presentation. We're just going to sit, there's nothing to look at. We're going to talk. So, board members, I have copy. I apologize, there's so much in this report. The print is very tiny. Apologize. So just to give you a sense of, any one more? Is there an extra one on the side? Thank you. Okay. So just to remind everyone of the goals in between each of the reports for this particular document, I'll just read the full statement and the objectives to you, and then I'll ask my colleagues to fill you in on where we are. For those who are either new to this report or for our audience members who, you know, may be curious, we have broken out these activities into several task areas. Those task areas include exploration, planning, creating, implementing, monitoring, analyzing, evaluating. And each of these tasks has been identified under one of those task areas. Then we also identify, we lead on that, whatever the particular item is, what the human and fiscal resources are attached to that goal, task item, and what the expectations for our outcomes are, and then the current status. So what we're going to do this evening is to give you a general overall impression of where we are with each of these goals. And my colleagues are going to speak to what some of the highlights are. But board members, you have the entire report at your disposal. For the public, know that tomorrow, once this report is given and this meeting is over, what we typically have done, and if you go to our district website, you'll see those, we've posted these reports. So you'll be able to see these reports that we're talking about on the website in case you want to learn a little bit more. So the district's strategic plan goal one is to continue using a different approach to all academic areas. And the objectives include increasing staff capacity for the use of instructional practices that address the needs of all learners through the provision of meaningful professional development. You're going to hear a lot of the same words that we just heard in Mr. Strian's report. To expand the use of data analysis and database decision-making to inform instruction, to improve academic outcomes for all students, including increasing local, state, and other formal assessment. And also to continue to review and revise and implement curriculum to ensure rigor and alignment to the state and national standards. And finally, to encourage opportunities to increase student, student self-confidence and their thirst for learning and self-awareness, so, and self-well-being. So this goal is really focused on teaching and learning. And I'm going to ask Mr. Novak to go through some of the things that are really highlights to these goals and objectives.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari. So I'm going to just comment on a few of the goals that I've been talking about all year when we've been looking in this, in this area. Some of the most successful parts of this goal was the year-one implementation of our K-5 math program. I just had a end-of-the-year conference call with our reps today just to talk about our first year of implementation, successes, next steps for professional development going forward. I believe we've had pretty decent feedback from our staff, our community, and our, and our students in regard to the first year. So we're excited for that implementation. So we're excited for that implementation. Along those lines, that began with a commitment to professional development. And we started that process a number of years ago with Conquer Math and Nancy Schulz and, you know, a process for best practice math instruction. And that has really helped us carry through with, with our goals and that. One other area I'd like to point out is the implementation of iReady. I'd like to give a shout-out to our staff and our, our students for our results this year. We just recently received our end-of-year results for the third diagnostic, and all of our elementary schools K-5 tested into the range of high performance and high growth. And I will be able to have a more elaborate presentation on that in July, when I have our Navigated Reports from Lincoln. So it was a, you know, a great first-year implementation, where we had, you know, where we had, you know, great areas of success. We're in the process now, you know, looking forward. We completed the replacement investigation process for our language arts curriculum in grades K through five. And we have adopted our program Wonders, which will be a new program for students next year. So that's, again, that's a commitment to one of our goals, and making sure that we're staying, you know, cutting-edge with the type of instruction that we offer.
Can I ask a question? The iReady, when can parents get their child's report?
Should be available already.
So it's on the iReady account?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And we could see if it says on grade level, high growth, high performing, it's like what?
So I get district-level reports where I was able to see, you know, I, I get a scattergram that shows where our, where our schools land, or where our grade levels land, that sort of thing. Individual parent will just see where their student landed.
Right, okay.
And where they are in relation to grade level expectations.
Thank you.
When you do the report for us, for the iReady, we're gonna see by school, close to district, how is that gonna?
I will probably do publicly district report. And then with our admin team, we're looking, when we meet, we meet as an admin team July 16th for our, for our annual, you know, leadership retreat. And that's the time when we'll drill down onto the specific schools, grade levels, that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay, our second goal is hometown pride. And the goal was to increase a sense of pride and unity across all schools in the district. The objectives were to develop consistent branding across all schools, to upgrade technology to create greater awareness of township events, and using a variety of technology apps and To empower individuals to impact their community through volunteering and mentorship, to increase student interactions with student to, with, I'm so sorry, this is very tiny, with alumni to facilitate transition from schools to community and the workforce, and to continue the process for recognition on a, on a, as district of character. And so, this year, you probably either read in the newsletter, heard from your school principal, or may have heard it in other places, you'll see that our schools are able to use the graphic that is only able to be, it's a copyrighted graphic that is only able to be used by schools that are part of Character.org and have been recognized. Two of our schools, Marshall Hill and West Milford High School, were recognized as New Jersey Schools of Character, and then Marshall Hill was also recognized as a national school of character this year. Some of our other schools are in the rotation and are already in, I believe it's a three-year process of continuing recognition. So they were recognized prior to this, and then we have some schools that will be applying again next year as schools of character. So, you know, that is something that all of our schools are pretty committed to. Some of the things that we've been trying to do this year is, are, you know, related to the whole notion of branding. Now, board members, several of us, when we had the, the school boards convention, attended workshops on branding, and brought back information and shared that with the rest of the board and administrators who attended. We came back and we kind of shared some of the things that we thought we could probably either emulate, or at least look into with our, with colleagues who were not in attendance at those workshops. The district, prior to my coming, to the district, was already engaged in, you know, as floor tiles were replaced, the colors of those floor tiles were moving to gold and black. As, as publications were put out, there were icons that were common across the district that are being used. And so, you know, branding is really, for a school district, is kind of the same as branding a company. You know, not everyone is exactly the same. We obviously know that each of our schools has its own personality and culture, but we strive for similar things. And so, through mottos, through mascots, we often will see some individuality, but when we come to goals, these are district goals. When we come to use, you know, themes, they are district themes. When we're working on projects, we're trying to make sure, for example, when Mr. Novak is talking about professional development and program improvements, we're trying to make sure that all of our schools receive the same training, and that all of our teachers are provided with the same professional development to use the same curriculum, so that your experience in one school is the same as it would be in a classroom in a school across town. So branding is more than just colors in a picture. You know, that's the, that's the surface of it. So I think this district has really done a lot of thoughtful prep for that, and we've been working on things that hopefully will, will carry through, and, and also allow for the individuality of each school's culture. As far as technology is concerned, you know, this district has committed to technology in a big way. You've been one-to-one for a number of years now. The projects and programs that you've initiated that are tied to curricular aspects and instruction, we talk about Class Link, which I think is something that has really allowed our elementary students, you know, all the way down to our youngest learners have the ability to, with one link, are able to then access the other applications that they're using in their classrooms, make it easier for them. You know, I think that there's been a lot of forethought, and the district's technology improvement plan is something that, you know, it spans multiple years, and it's an ongoing project. So all of that is important. When we talk about the notion of community, we also look at how, how we reach out to our community. So one of the things that we did this year was we developed a quarterly newsletter. The final issue of that will be coming out on the 28th of June. And that, that issue, that last issue for this school year is going to be one that's celebratory of all of our schools' end-of-year activities, promotion and graduation events, and really something that, that provides information for, for those who are in our school community and who are not, that, that may be interested in what's happening in our schools. And there is a lot of great information and events going on. So, you know, you have an event called Hometown Pride, and I really think that that is something special. You celebrate, truly celebrate your school district, you truly celebrate your community. There are a lot of events that the school and community organizations partner with. We'll be hearing about some of that later on this evening. So I really think that with Goal Two, we're pretty well down, you know, we're going down the road in the right way. And I, I will not be with you after this week, but I'll be keeping my eye on West Milford because I know great things are happening here. Board members, do you have any questions about Hometown Pride, Goal Two? Okay. Let's see. Okay, so we are on Goal Three, and that's facilities and operations. So Goal Three is to maintain and update district facilities, fostering a safe and secure learning environment in and out of the classroom. Things like providing multi-level used turf field for, for school and community use, upgrade and maintain district's technology opportunities to provide modern, safe, secure, and aesthetically pleasing facilities, and to continue to investigate modernization of buildings for the future. So, Mr. Schulz, I'm gonna leave this one in your hands.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari. One of the parts of the goal was to evaluate the feasibility of installing an artificial turf field to be used by the school and the community. One of the agenda items tonight is a $60,000 grant that the Township of West Milford obtained for, to put lighting at Daigo's Field. So that was one step of the, first step of putting the turf up on the field, was getting the lighting procured, and $60,000 will not be the full amount of the lighting needed, but that'll be at least a portion of it. And obviously, we're still working with the township, and working with the town, our district professionals, our architects, of updating our, our long-range facilities plan that needs to be updated to include a project like this. So we're working with them as well to find the funding for that. Some of the technology upgrades that we've done previously, our Chromebooks for all of our students has been funded through the ESAR grant, which expires at the end of this year. So one of the priorities of the 24-25 budget that goes into effect next week for next school year was to locally fund the purchase of the Chromebooks, so we could keep up with our replacement schedule for all of our students, so we could have new, new devices for all our students and keep recycling the whole process. As well, Mr. Winston has been involved in the updating the instructional laptop, laptop program for our staff, so that's been complete, and everything's been updated as well for that. Another thing we do is we utilize the E-Rate program, which is a federal program for refunds for technology and other devices that we, that the district uses. We use that whenever we can to get discounts on other items that we purchase. One of the other aspects was HVAC upgrades for our buildings. Through the ESAR funding, we installed air conditioning and improved ventilation in some of the large common areas at Marshall Hill, Maple Road, and at Macapin and the cafeteria. That was all funded through the ESAR III grant. And we are also currently working on updating all of the rooftop exhaust units at the high school, middle school, and elementary schools. The elementary schools have been completed, and the high school and Macapin are in progress right now. As always, we are working on removing and abating asbestos floor tiles. Our Buildings and Ground Supervisor, Mr. Glenn, he is working on the schedule for that as well, to continue that cycle each budget, each budget cycle. And on top of that, of course, is the school security measures in all the schools. We're always looking for new projects and updating our LRFP to some of those security projects at all of our, our district schools. Another aspect of the plan and the goal here was to rehab and renovate the athletic fields and our fine and performing art facilities. So we, the district maintenance team is great, they've been updating all of our fields, they've been taking on more responsibility this year of maintaining our fields for all of our sports, and also township sports, so they've, they thought the fields looked great this past spring. And one of the big items that we have going on, that project should be starting hopefully before the end of the summer, would be the UGL window replacement project. That was included in last year's budget, and the district applied for a rod grant, which they didn't, we didn't receive, so we funded the balance of the project through the 24-25 budget. We're working with the architect and the engineers now, we're hopefully get that project advertised and bid it out soon as we get that project off the ground. It's been, I think it's been dragging on since about 2018, so we're excited to finally get that project moving. And one of the other projects that's always been going on for a long time now in West Milford, anyone who lives here knows that, is the Hillcrest property. The district, working with the township, commissioned a feasibility study with an engineer who's currently going on right now. They're doing a feasibility study to see what can be done at that, at that property, and what it would look like, and cost-wise, and that, that project is currently going on, we're waiting on a report from them for that.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Schulz? Okay, our next goal has to do with well-being. The goal, goal number four is to create positive, inclusive, and connected school environment for promotion of lifelong health and well-being. The objectives are to increase opportunities for extracurricular activities, K-12, that address student needs and interests, to foster individuals to create and collaborate all, really, this is very tiny, I am so sorry, school culture to acceptance in all schools, and to promote mental and physical involvement for students and staff, and together to strengthen peer-to-peer relationships and the school, school-home connection in order to build and a more supportive school environment. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Ressa to handle our achievements in Goal Four.
Thank you, Dr. Fenari, and good evening, everyone. The, the goal of well-being is covered by three particular areas. The first is co-curricular activities. And in that particular goal, this year, we have been able to create a lot of opportunities for schools to offer clubs that really emphasize acceptance and inclusiveness. And that includes, in terms of success indicators, plans for clubs, approval of club advisors, and clubs that have met specific criteria, have been implemented. One particular one that we're gonna hear a little bit later about is the tremendous success and pride that we get from our unified clubs and athletics. And so you're gonna hear a little bit about that in a little while. Also, we are very big on the developing middle school intramural athletics program. There's a plan for that program, approval of team coaches, and as of this month, a plan is in place for continuing that success moving forward. The second area in this goal is mental and physical wellness. We wanna make sure we're creating opportunities for our community members to develop social, emotional wellness, for our staff first, and then we look at, really, through the New Jersey Employee, Employee Health Benefits Program, they have a lot of programs and wellness activities and supports available for our community, our staff community, and we're gonna be looking at that going forward into the upcoming year to support our staff in the area of mental health wellness. Also, there's professional development opportunities for staff in this area. We've had a number of wellness PD sessions, and specifically, a suicide prevention course was provided to staff this past school year, where faculty meetings were used to provide some training and understanding on suicide prevention, and how to look for the warning signs, and supporting not only our staff, but our students and our community in this regard. And we'll be looking at other organizations to look at presentations in this area for the, for the upcoming school year. And the last area is supportive school environment, where we're fostering programs and practices that support students that are dealing with issues of peer conflict, family changes, social, emotional challenges. We have a number of programs that we've been able to implement throughout the district, through all of our schools this year. One highlight program that I'll speak to is our NJ4S partnership that we were approved back this, this past year, and a number of our schools have really engaged with this outside, outside organization through the Department of Children and Families and the state, the state of New Jersey, to provide support groups for students, so that they can talk about a variety of topics that are of importance to them, and address areas of concern like bullying, conflict, and anxiety, and other types of mental health needs. We're also looking to create opportunities to host therapy animals in our schools. That has been a big hit this year. We've had a number of therapy animals come in to meet with students. We've have, have those recorded visits, and that's been really a wonderful thing to see. Students that maybe are a little bit shy or reserved, being able to read to animals, being able to interact with them, and seeing the beautiful things that happen as a result of that therapeutic support has barely been special to see. And lastly, we are also continuing our exploration of mental and physical wellness activities for students and staff, like yoga, meditation, things of that nature. And those events have continued, have happened this year, and will continue to happen going forward into next year. So as, as it pertains to well-being, I feel like our district is doing a lot of wonderful things in this area, especially what we've all been through over the last few years. This is, couldn't be more an important topic for our community. So thank you, Dr. Fenari.
Board members, any questions? Yes.
I just have a concern with the current status of everything under well-being. I think maybe it was, I, I think it was probably an oversight and a mistake, to be honest, because as I look through the rest of the report, a lot of it says ongoing. And Dr. Ressa, I just heard you say that some of these were ongoing even into next year, yet the, the current status for everything under well-being says complete.
I could speak to it, so, and I spoke about this with Dr. Fenari. So as you look at the different layers of the, the plan, you'll see explore, plan, create, implement, monitor, analyze, and evaluate. So as it pertains to the stage that is, it is in this report, that's why the, based on the activities that have been done this year, that, for example, if you look at the first one, co-curricular, it says create. So that part has been completed. So the next step in the process would be implementation, and so...
Okay, so, very specific, the first one, like you said, create. The opportunities for all schools to offer clubs that emphasize acceptance and inclusiveness. So I know, I've definitely seen this at Macapin and the high school, which has been amazing, really good job, and thank you. I just am unaware, is this also happening K to five?
So in terms of the unified, I know that a lot of the activities that we are trying to... to promote is we start, we look at the high school, we look at the middle school. And a lot of the activities, what we were doing in our unified week that we had a few months ago, that was really spearheaded throughout the district in terms of, there was a lot of theme weeks, there was a lot of great celebrations each day that the entire community engaged in. So, those are, those are activities that while we had a pep rally at the high school, we definitely let those activities and the enthusiasm trickle down into the, into the elementary levels.
Great. Thank you. I guess I would, I mean, it's not my report, but if it was, I would request that it said completed, unified at Macapin and the high school, did weeks, like in that current status. Explain a little bit more like each other one did.
Sure.
So, that when it does get uploaded to the website, as a parent, when I read it, I know of some things, but I didn't know of all of those even, you know, and even as a board member reading it. So, I think it would be nice for the community when it gets uploaded to see.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. It's awesome. I just...
Sure.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. And our final goal with the strategic plan has to do with financial stability. So, goal five is to, to achieve financial stability in light of steady cuts under S2. And I'm going to ask Mr. Schultz to speak to that goal.
One of the most obvious ways to try to achieve that goal is to limit spending in the current budget year. We did that. We shut the budget down in January, much to the dismay of most of the staff in the district. But when we shut it down in January, all purchases that came through had to be requested through me and my office in order to be approved. And they had to justify what the purchase was and justification for it. So, doing it that way, it helps us generate some fund balance for, say, for the end of the year to support future budgets and also hopefully generate money to deposit into some of our reserves, our capital reserve and our maintenance reserve accounts, which is actually a motion on the agenda for tonight. And another way to do it was just to become more efficient in analyzing our enrollment and staffing with an eye on the efficiency. So, I know we've always shared the enrollment reports. So, the staffing, when we worked through the budget, the budget cycle this past year was working on finding staffing based on the projected enrollment for the 24-25 school year and being as efficient as we possibly can with how we use those funds. Another aspect of this was finding alternate funding sources for the district. So, back in the fall, I completed the application for the stabilization aid, which we were awarded $405,996. That went a long way towards our ELA program that Mr. Novak has been working with. Also, I know we bought the Marshall Hill playground equipment for the pre-K program over there and also the fencing that will be done at Paradise Knoll School. Also, we manage the ESER grants and the entitlement grants. I work closely with the Director of Ed's Office with Mr. Novak and his, and his staff to work on spending that money efficiently and also handling the final reports. And we're on track to spend all the funds that we've been allocated through the ESER grants and also to complete all the final reports to the state, to the federal and state government. And another aspect to try to save some money would be to return completed capital projects to their original funding sources, like capital reserve. That's also a motion on the agenda tonight to put money back in capital reserve for the recently completed high school and middle school security vestibule projects. And also, the middle school kitchen floor project that was done last summer. Those projects came in under budget, so we have money going back into capital reserve once approved tonight.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Schultz about financials? Okay, thank you. Once again, with the recommended additions, we will be able to post this for the public by the end of the week. Thank you, Dr. Fenare. Director of Education's report, Mr. Novak.
This is always one of my favorite moments of the year, when we're able to honor and invite our annual retirees back to come and get a round of applause and, and be acknowledged by the district. We have a number of retirees who are, who we're going to acknowledge here tonight. And we have, we have some of you that I'm grateful that you, that you came here so we can hand you, hand you a token of our, a token of our respect. One of the quotes I always love, Dr. Seuss quote, is a, "Don't, don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." I don't see any retirees crying, so it's, it's usually, that's a quote I won't use going forward. Every retiree I see is much happier. I see Lisa Lyons and Colleen Chalata, they're happier and younger. Well, it's 10 years now, so I just, it's exponential in how better you're going to look as time goes on. So, Dr. Fenare is going to come around and I'm going to read our, our retirees and years of service. The years of service that I'm going to announce are years of service in public education, not necessarily just here in West Milford. So, I'm going to start off with Barbara Francisco, Board Administrator and Business Administrator and Board Secretary at the Board Office, 25 years of service. One of our honorees in attendance, Dr. John Highland, mathematics teacher, high school, Mrs. Lynn Doherty, Special Education Resource Teacher, Upper Greenwood Lake School, 24 Mrs. Helen Frank, Administrative Assistant in the Board Office to the Director of Special Edie Rinaldi, Special Class Aid High School, 26 years. Christopher Kelly, Operations Supervisor, Board Office, 40 years. Linda Connolly, Special Class Aid, Macapin, 25 years. Mark Nowacki, Special Class Aid, High School, 13 years. Linda Jacobs, Special Ed Resource Center Teacher, Macapin School, 28 years. Dr. Brian McLaughlin, Music Teacher, High School, 26 years. Marie Baldini Doyle, Social Studies Teacher, Macapin School, 30 years. Allison Perry, Grade Four Teacher, Maple Road School, 25 years. Wendy Whitman, Grade Three Teacher, Marshall Hill School, 25 years. Jennifer Metcalf, Social Studies Teacher, High School, 28 years. Janelle Pine, Grade Five Teacher, Upper Greenwood Lake School, 30 years. Miriam McCarthy, Special Class Aid, High School, 18 years. And here in attendance. And going to Alaska soon. And I know when I said, "Don't cry because it's over," they didn't know what I was talking about. And that's from our teaching and aides. And now, we're moving on to others, our other services. Our food service, Pam Piskowski, Head Cook, Manager, Apshua School, 25 years. And next is Alana Kotowski, Vehicle Aid, Transportation Department. It says seven years, but in vehicle aid years, it's 21. And then even, Lori Polkowski, Vehicle Aid, Transportation Department, 19 years. That's 57 in vehicle aid years. So, she's not here tonight. In operations, Henry Cox, Custodian, High School, 30 years. I want to say once again, thank you for all of your time and service to all of our retirees, those who weren't able to be with here tonight. Hopefully, you're watching at home. Nate's, Nate's got it rolling. So, know that we value all of your time here in West Milford and truly appreciate what you've done, not only for our students, but for the lives you've touched, not only in the board, but, but also in your colleagues in the, in the building. So, thank you for your time and greatly appreciate it. And my favorite thing to do with the Director of Education report is to introduce someone else. So, without further ado, I'd like to call up Mr. Joe Trent Acosta and Ms. Debbie O'Brien. Mr. Joe Trent Acosta is, I just assume everyone knows Trent, Phys Ed Supervisor, Athletic Director, All World kind of, kind of activities. And then, Ms. Debbie O'Brien, former Board Trustee, also with the Highlands Family Success Center and also the, what's your title, Director?
Coordinator.
Coordinator for the West Milford Municipal Alliance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Fenare. It's been nice working with you. Congratulations and good luck in wherever your future ends up. And Dr. Kitchen, good luck with your new career at West Milford. Thank you, Mr. Novak. And also, Dr. Ressa and Dr. Schultz, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to all of you, the board, for the few things we're going to talk about tonight. Keep it very brief. I know I don't want to lose a bet, Mr. Novak. But we'll make it very, very brief. But we do want to highlight the accomplishments of some students that we have here and coaches as well. But first, while I'm here with Mrs. O'Brien, we want to talk about some of the programs that we are continuing to work with at high school, Heroes and Cool Kids, which is also dovetailing into Sidekicks at the middle school, which all falls under our committee, which is called 4C. Ultimately, it's our, it's our Climate, Culture, and Character Education Committee that we're starting this summer and getting off the ground. And ultimately, when you see all the different programs and all the different district goals, you see that it all starts from the ground up. And we're, and I know that Debbie is going to speak more about the program itself, but we're planning a meeting this summer and really just to jump in headfirst and see what, we talked about school character, where are our areas of growth and areas of strength and really move on them. So, without further ado, Debbie.
Like Mr. Novak said, I'm the coordinator of the West Milford Municipal Alliance. The Alliance has funded Heroes and Cool Kids over the last seven years. Through the hard work of Donald Dougherty, Joe Jordan, Lauren Rampant, and the support of Coach T., as I affectionately call him, and your administration, Heroes and Cool Kids has had a positive impact in our schools. Heroes and Cool Kids, for those who don't know, is an evidence-based student leadership program. Train high school students work with fifth graders, fifth, three times a year on building resilience, character, and strength. The mentors work with their mentees on dealing with various situations such as mental health, bullying, drugs, and alcohol. Feedback from the students and teachers have been extremely positive. Over 90% of our fifth graders found this program to be beneficial in decision-making, goal-obtaining, and intra- and interpersonal behavior. They appreciate the high school students sharing personal experiences, which help them think about things differently. Every year, we get a survey back, which helps, because it's a grant-based program, so we need feedback from both mentors, mentees, and the teachers. One particular comment that stood out from the, one of the fifth graders, "Heroes and Cool Kids helped me connect with my older sibling more and helped me understood why she was so stressed. And now that I can finally talk to her like we used to." The high school students have enjoyed being mentors and role models. Many of them realize that they are making a difference in the life of fifth graders. 100% of our fifth grade teachers want this program to continue. They are impressed on how well the mentors are prepared and the influence that they make with their students. One of the comments from the staff, "This is one of the most important programs we have in this district. I cannot say enough wonderful things about the positive experience I have had over the years. It is so rewarding and beneficial to all involved." The West Milford Municipal Alliance had applied for and received a grant from the Atlantic Health Systems to establish a Sidekick program, which is very similar, I quote, like a precursor to Heroes and Cool Kids. But the mentors are eighth grade students who will be working with fourth grade students. Their focus is on important life skills that lead to good choices, including goal-setting, anti-bullying, and anti-substance. The Alliance most appreciates the support and help from our school administrators, faculty, staff, and the Board of Education, and their cooperation in the application of this grant, as well as for their support in its implementation. Thank you.
Can't say thank you again enough to Debbie O'Brien, who has successfully gotten us awarded grants for both Heroes and Cool Kids and now Sidekicks as well. And the work that you do on Dougherty is just really fantastic. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to call the families of our Unified Track Team. And I know we have a few here today. Coach Clay is going to, is going to come up with you. And up in front here, we have something to celebrate tonight. Come on up, guys. Winning championships doesn't come often. It takes hard work, determination, character, dedication, and sometimes a little luck. This is true for championships on every level. We've seen them in lacrosse and cross-country at the county level. We've seen them at our, at our conference level with track. We've seen them throughout our, our athletic programs. But let's talk states. The highest achievement the team can reach in New Jersey in inter-scholastic athletics is a state championship. I wanted to take a few minutes to acknowledge and congratulate the Unified Track and Field Team on their NJSIAA Group B State Championship back on June 6th. Student athletes are led by Coach Clay and Coach Rocky. Please, let's give them a big round of applause. So, thank you, Coach Clay, for your leadership and all that you do. Thank you to the families. You heard a lot about branding and character and a lot of different things tonight. And I think that the Unified program, as you'll see now in this video, very short, two-minute clip, you'll see how Unified, to me and to all of us, really exemplifies unity and, and all the things of character we've talked about before. Not only did the Track Team win the state championship, many of which these student athletes and coaches work with our basketball and bowling teams. And you'll see that highlighted here as well. So, once again, thank you again for your continued support for Unified. Thank you, everyone, once again. And thank you so much to the students, to the families, and the coaches. What a great, great job. Congrats on state championship. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Joe Jordan, our TV science teacher, who did an amazing job on that video. Thank you to Mr. Winston as well. And thanks for your time. Have a great night. Have a great night.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trent Acosta. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. I can't think of a better way to wrap the 2023-2024 school year than with that video. Fantastic. Great job, Ben. Who hit that three? Who hit that deep three?
Oh, that was deep, of course.
Yeah, of course. Of course, basketball and the blood. All right, thank you. We're going to take a few-minute break.
[inaudible] Amazing. Amazing, yes. I'm not sure why we needed a minute, but I was actually going to ask if we can move just to public comment, so that these poor children could get through. I think that's what probably they're here for. Is that true, parents?
Yes.
So, I don't know why we're... I can make a motion to go to public comment, so that these children could have their comments and then go home, and then we can finish the rest? Or am I...
This is public comment, or not an agenda item, though, right? So we'll just make this one exception?
I don't know. I have absolutely no clue.
We have typically taken a break at the retirement meeting.
I'm just asking...
That's the only reason. There was no reason other than that to allow retirees and the presentation.
Just looking around, I just don't see anybody else that we need to break for after public comment, maybe, and then we could continue. I just, I think that, I agree with Peter, those children, parents, good job. They've been so well-behaved, and I know we all agree up here, so...
So we'll move to public comment right now?
Public comment.
Sure. All right, so we need a voice vote for that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so, public comment, and this is going to be on anything, not just an agenda item. Because I don't believe you're speaking on an agenda item, correct? Correct, okay. So, public comments. Hold on, I gotta go to the second one. Sorry. Well, it says for the first opportunity to pass certain right to comment on agenda items. So, during the second, blah, blah, blah. So, all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. And again, this is the second opportunity for public comment, where we can speak to anything. So, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen of the West Milford Board of Education, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Travis Lozot. I will be representing the parents of all the incoming second graders for the 24-25 school year. I am here to address the proposed class size for the second grade class at Upper Greenwood Lake School for the 2024-2025 school year. The current proposal suggests a single section with 28 students. I stand before you to advocate for the division of this class into two sections. Research consistently shows that smaller class sizes, especially in the early grades, yield significant benefits for students. According to a study conducted by the National Education Association, smaller class sizes in kindergarten through second grade are linked to improved student performance. The Tennessee STAR Student Teacher Achievement Ratio Study, one of the most well-known and comprehensive studies on this topic, found that students in smaller classes performed better academically, and these benefits persisted throughout their academic careers. In the STAR study, students in classes of 13 to 17 performed better in reading and math compared to their peers in larger classes of 20 to 25 students. Specifically, students in smaller classes, an 8 to 10 improvement, 8 to 10% improvement in test scores. For our second graders, a difference of 10 to 14 students per class is significant. By maintaining a class size closer to 15, we would be giving our students a stronger foundation in these critical early years. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to provide more individualized attention. With fewer students, teachers can better understand each child's unique learning needs, offer personalized support, and foster a more engaging and interactive learning environment. This is particularly crucial in the early grades, when students are developing fundamental skills in reading, writing, and mathematics. Additionally, classroom management is easier with fewer students. Teachers can dedicate more time to instruction rather than discipline, creating a more positive and productive classroom atmosphere. This leads to a reduction in disruptive behavior, allowing for a more focused and conducive learning environment. Furthermore, smaller class sizes have been linked to long-term benefits. According to research from the American Educational Research Association, students in smaller classes have better attendance records, fewer disciplinary issues, and a greater likelihood of pursuing higher education. This sets a strong precedent for their future, not just academically, but in life as well. The benefits of smaller class sizes extend to teachers as well. Teachers in smaller classes report higher job satisfaction and lower stress levels. They can implement diverse instructional strategies and engage in more meaningful interactions with their students. This positive work environment can reduce teacher burnout and turnover, which is beneficial for the school community as a whole. Concerning the proposed class size of 28 students for next year, we must ask ourselves, if we are truly setting up our children for success, while 28 students might seem manageable, is that the higher end of what the study suggests is optimal for young learners? By splitting this into two sections, we can provide an environment where every child is seen, heard, and given the attention they need to thrive. In addition to these reasons, the current third grade class at UGL is put into one section to being of 2022. By October, there was a dire need for splitting this large class into two sections, creating chaos among students, relocations of staff members, and headaches for parents and administrators alike. As George Santayana said, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. Let's learn from the past and not repeat this tragic history." In closing, I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of smaller class sizes for our second graders at Upper Greenwood Lake School. By investing in two sections, we are not just managing numbers, we are investing in the quality of education and the future for our children. Let us take this opportunity to create the best possible learning environment for our young students. Thank you for your time and consideration on behalf of the parents of the UGL 24-25 second grade class.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Ms. Lockwood, Jim Foody actually signed up.
Yeah, Mr. Foody.
Hello, everybody, Jim Foody. Been a long time since I've been in, sitting in this dais, and there were good times and there were bad times. Some of the bad times, I just relived when I was reading a newspaper article recently about this new bullying incident that this district is facing. And it reminded me so much of a young lady who had to sue the district, and the district's insurance was like 907,000 to settle the lawsuit, and that didn't go to court. I'm sure if that went to court, it would have been a lot worse. To still see this stuff going on, it blows my mind. I remember a conversation with Mrs. Dwyer, when she told me about her son being bullied at the school. And she went in, showed everybody the riot act, and it got taken care of. And that's what we need to strive in this district, is to not have any kids bullied. We're talking about culture and climate. What we need are kids not being bullied. Now, it's a suggestion, I don't know how far you can go with it, but I know when my son was in this school, and there was a young man being bullied, he went up, spoke to the kid, it was bullying, and it continued. It stopped when the entire football team went around him at lunch and said, "You're picking on our friend?" And they said, "This needs to stop." And you know what? It stopped. So, you want to talk about culture and climate, and camaraderie, and teamwork, maybe getting some of the sports teams, football, baseball, soccer, getting those kids to look out for the other kids who were getting bullied, and maybe we can stop this. You know, Columbine, for crying out loud, that started because kids were getting bullied. Parkland, kids getting bullied. Are we setting ourselves up for something like that happening in West Milford? I hope to God not. But something needs to be done. And what happened with the case when I was on the board in this, it was so eerily similar when I was reading that newspaper article, it made me sick to my stomach, and that's why I'm here, to plead with you guys. Now, my kids, they're not in the school, but there's other kids that are in the school system, and I don't want to ever see any of these little guys that came in here going through what I read about in the paper and what I saw with that previous case. Reed was the name, Arianna. This, this, we can't continue on this course. And Terry should know, Mr. Sinead and Winston know, and everybody else is kind of new and after the fact. But, it's very, very eerily similar, the things that went on with this young man I read about in the paper, to what happened to that young lady years ago. And I would implore you guys to do whatever you can, you know? It's just, it's not right, you know? All of us wouldn't want to get bullied, so why are we allowing it to happen to the kids that were, that you guys and the teachers and staff are here to protect? It needs to stop. You know, and I see some of you looking at me, and I hope you're hearing me, and I see others looking, not listening to me, but it needs to stop. I hope that you guys can take some action on this, that has a result. I had talked about, when I was Board President, why don't we get these kids who do the bullying to write an apology letter, and have them read it at a board meeting? I mean, it might, it might help. We've got to do something. But to just let this continue to go on and on and on, it's not right. And so I hope that with this new culture and climate, but more importantly, getting the kids to get involved, and a great way to do it is, you know, the football team, they're a team, soccer team, they're a team, baseball, wrestling, get them involved and ask them to help, and if you see kids getting bullied, you know, intervene, mention it, tell. I mean, we're just all waiting for Columbine, or Parkland, or something like that. I hope to God that you guys really take this to heart. And the superintendent, I hope you're hearing me, this just can't continue to keep occurring. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foody. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Move to closed public comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now, back to, you're finished with your Director of Education report, right, Mr. Novak? Okay, thank you. So, special reports on correspondence, Mr. Schultz?
Sure, I have the workshop regular meeting minutes for May 21st, 2024, and the executive session minutes for May 21st, 2024.
I move to approve the May 21st workshop regular meeting and executive session meeting minutes.
Second. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? President's Report. So, real quick, I just wanted to speak to the end-of-the-year assemblies, celebrations, promotions, and graduations that occurred. It seemed like it was a very successful end of the school year. All the students were recognized at their fifth-grade assemblies. I know a board member and administrator was present at every one, so thank you for those that attended. It's great to see all those happy faces, especially with them moving up to Macapin. And then the promotion ceremony at Macapin was a great success also. And graduation at the high school, congratulations to the 2024 high school graduates, another hot, but a successful night. So that's it for my President's Report. I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. We did public comments already, so now we can go to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Dr. Fenari?
Yes, there are several changes. I will make sure I know my tabs. Okay, so, board members, on page 12 of your agenda, on motion 37, if you go down to the third staff member named Jimoleski, the hours for that staff member are changed from 60 to 100, and the not-to-exceed amount changes to $1,976. Now, we move on to page 14 of the agenda. Motion number 39, the first staff member on the agenda, the hourly rate was published in the agenda incorrectly, the hourly rate that was approved in May is $66,000, listen to me, $66.80. I apologize. $66.80. Okay, and then, the bottom of the same page, we have two staff members that are being added to this agenda, and Dr. Ressa, you may have to help me with the names. Melissa, is it Varian?
Yes.
Okay, is being added, V-A-R-I-A-N. And the hourly rate for that staff member is $68.43. The number of hours is seven, and the payment not to exceed is $479.01. The second staff member to be added to this list is Elizabeth Misano, and the hourly rate for that staff member is $78.29. The number of hours is seven, and the payment not to exceed is $548.03. And the last adjustment that I have is on page 15 of the agenda. Motion number 41, for staff member Mary Brown, the rate of pay changes to $23 per hour. Anybody need any? Need me to go back? Okay, those are all of the, oh, and, one more, sorry. It's page nine. Okay, on page nine, motion number 21, we're going to remove that motion due to the fact that we don't have enough staff who can vote on that motion this evening. Oh, staff, board members who can vote on that motion this evening. We'll try again on Thursday.
This is awkward.
Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mrs. Dwyer, Education.
And the payment not to exceed is $548.03. And the last adjustment that I have is on page 15 of the agenda. Motion number 41. For staff member Mary Brown, the rate of pay changes to $23 per hour. Anybody need any, need me to go back? Okay, those are all of the, oh, and, okay, one more, sorry. It's page nine. Okay, on page nine, motion number 21. We're going to remove that motion due to the fact that we don't have enough staff who can vote on that motion this evening, or staff, board members who can vote on that motion this evening. We'll try again on Thursday.
This is awkward.
Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mrs. Dwyer, education.
Okay, I have to find my page. I'd like to move items 1 through 19 to approve, discussion approved.
Could I get a second?
Toshia. I have a question.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Hey, Mrs. Romeo?
Hi.
Hi.
Am I the only one that doesn't remember the HIBs and didn't, I didn't get the call? So I could either abstain or I could ask to table it. Does everyone else remember them? Number 19?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have enough votes if I don't vote? Okay.
I mean, if everyone?
I just wanted to make sure before it comes up, and then I just don't remember that was.
We'd have five.
Okay, cool.
I do, I'm sorry.
Do you remember 19, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a question. On number eight. Are all our staff involved on Rubicon, not at the site, for the mapping?
Yes.
Is everybody involved in that?
Essentially, yes. It's where we house all of our, all of our curriculum documents.
Well, I know that, but I just want to know if every staff member is participating in that and putting in their plans and?
No, we don't, we don't enter our plans into Rubicon.
Well, you do objectives and activities.
Well, that's part of, yeah, so I think we're talking about two different things. So the curriculum that we house in Rubicon is our, those are our, like, parent documents. So for our grade two history, our grade two social studies, our Algebra One course, that's where we, that's where our master document is for the, you know, the things we teach in that, in that course, the scope and sequence, what time of year we do the pacing. Teachers create lesson plans separately from that and submit it to their supervisor. There was a time where staff members in the high school were submitting units from Rubicon as their lesson plans. That's not, that's not taking place anymore. We haven't been doing that for, I want to say back to 2016, 2017. But yes, everyone, everyone technically is involved because it governs all that we do. So for example, this summer, we're working on some curriculum projects for K-5 ELA replacement, the update of our K-5 math replacement from last year. And we have Algebra One, Geometry, Algebra Two, our advanced courses. Those are being created, and then they'll be in Rubicon for, for the teachers to access.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Romeo?
I said we talked to number nine about IXL.
Number nine. I, I guess I thought we were getting rid of IXL. Like, where do we still use it if we have I ready?
We have, we've abandoned it and controlled abandonment in our elementary schools. We still have access to IXL for some subgroups as a tool in some small group settings. At the middle school and high school, it's still, it still has been used for, for practice items and supporting the curriculum.
Even though we have a new math, I mean, okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
The kids aren't being graded on this, are they? Are they still being graded on IXL?
It depends on the, it depends on the teacher, it depends on the.
They're not supposed to be graded on it. This is supposed to be.
So the discussions that we've had over the years with IXL were about how it was being graded. So now the grading isn't, isn't correlated to the score they get on an IXL assessment. That's one of the things we've talked about over the years, is teachers were giving, some, some staff members were giving a score of a 70 if a kid got a 70 on the IXL assessment, which 70 is mastery. So what we have now is participation grade. So if they complete their assessment, if they reach the, you know, the number that's considered mastery, it's not getting a number assignment, it's getting a completion grade. But I, I don't want to keep going on about it, but I never stop hearing about, talking about.
I know, and I want you to talk to it a bit more, because if, if I vote no, how upset, like, how is this going to affect our students negatively?
Well, it depends on the votes, I suppose.
It does, but I'm probably going to know on IXL. I definitely thought we were getting rid.
If everyone else voted no, we'd have no IXL, and then we'd have a gap.
A gap where? We have a new math program. We have a new math supervisor.
We don't have a new math program in middle school and high school.
Mr. Novak, can I also speak to the IXL piece? That I know that a lot of special education students use it as a tool as well. We do rely on the IXL, but it is a tool that, that certain subgroups, as you're saying, do use, utilize it, you know, to help with the variety of needs that they have.
Ooh, I just wrote my pen out of frustration. So for three straight years, I've asked for, to show me how, show me where IXL is used positively. Like, where is it? And I've seen nothing but frustration. I don't hear anything good. So maybe you want to, we should table it, and I don't know. But I personally, it used to be the ELA program, now it's IXL for me. It has been IXL for a long time, not just for me. But I just don't know that I see the positive in it. I don't see how it's supplementing the program.
Doesn't this new program, this new math program that we're coming, have a supplemental aspect to it?
So in K-5, yes, and that's, and in K-5, that's where we have different, different tools. We have added a variety of different things at the middle school and the high school. You know, Delta Math, for example, we've, we've added some, some pieces to the puzzle. But until we replace middle school and high school, we need to supplement because IXL addresses math standards. It's essentially math practice. And we've, I've been talking all year and last year and the year before that and before that about raising our, our ability as a district to achieve in math. And this is a tool that helps do that. I would appreciate going forward if we had specific examples of, of the, you know, what the problems are.
Some of that is my fault. I should have, I didn't get to read this until walking in, right before walking in tonight. So with that in mind, I will give you one more year. But truly, I am very frustrated as a parent and a board member with IXL. And I, I need to see how it is affecting our students in a positive light and not hear how much it's stressing them out and affecting their, their mental well-being. Because that's all I hear in the community. And I have yet to see, personally, I mean, I'll speak for myself, but I think there are other board members that are sure to agree with me. So I, because of that, my mistake tonight in not being able to discuss this with you sooner, I will, I will vote yes. But I will let you know that it's, it's on my list this year of something that I would like to see in how it's helping our West Milford students and not hurting them, because it doesn't feel good, you know?
I think, I think, Kate, what, I'm not sure if this is what you're feeling, but I feel that it's being used not so much as an aid to improve the math skills, but rather as a punishment.
So I'm going to disagree with that. I think it was in the past. I mean, IXL has been talked about for many years. I can go back to being on superintendent's roundtable, like, pre-COVID, many years, and I know this was.
It's like the minute I got this job, you guys started going after IXL. I didn't bring it here.
I never.
Just bring, you know.
I was just trying to prove math. I was there for special education, so IXL wasn't really on my topic. But what I will say, what I have noticed with a child who was struggling with IXL, now that he's gone to the high school, I've noticed that the struggle really isn't there. It's being implemented differently. And I think that's an attestation to you and getting that out there to your staff and your teachers and changing the way that it's graded. And it is for participation and completion on a homework grade. Or that's been the, the way that it, my son was given IXL this year in the high school. So I think just making sure maybe across the board that every grade level, whether it be at Macapin or the high school, and every teacher is implementing it the same way. Maybe just refreshing, maybe that's what it is if it's still out there in the community.
I think that would be a good, maybe September, October, education committee objective to provide exactly where and how. Because I, I mean, before I, because, because we have been looking at numbers and our costs, the digital resources that we are, we canceled quite a few. The digital resources that we have for renewal are ones that the usage, when I look on the, on the administrative end, I can see the usage across the district justifies the cost. So it's, it had, it is being utilized, it is being implemented. And I haven't, I haven't heard in years a concern, other than, you know, some jokes at Superintendent Roundtable, basically going back to like the 2016 jokes. That there was something currently amiss with IXL.
One of the most frustrating things about IXL is, let's just say a student misses math, they miss school or whatever, and they get from their teacher, do IXL, I-7, I-9, B-15, and all the letters and the numbers that they have to do. If they miss the instruction, they don't know how to do it. So every problem that they get wrong, their score goes down and down, and then they have more problems to do. To explain it to anyone that hasn't seen IXL a little bit. Maybe what would help those students is here's your IXL homework, and here's the videos to each one. Or, you know, or something along the lines, because you can't just give a kid IXL and expect them to learn it. It's supposed to be supplement, like a supplement, you know, supplemental. So I know that is some of the frustration, you know? But it's nice to hear that things are changing, and I just haven't experienced or seen that yet. And so, but I already told you I'll go yes, so we can move on, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lippi?
I just got one simple question. I like my data. Number one, the Language Instructional Education Program, basically the old EDSL?
Used to call, it used to be called EDSL, three years prior, now it's the most.
Just out of curiosity, how many students do we have in the world in that, are they clustered or are they?
District-wide, we're, we're, I believe we're in the 50s now.
Wow, okay, is it pretty spread throughout the district, or are they clustered, you know, people clustered?
No, they're K-12. Our, you know, we house our program at the Appschuas School, so it would appear to be.
Appschuas School was for the K-5?
The K-5, right. But we do have, we do have students throughout, throughout the middle school and the high school. That's why we added, we've increased staff. We had a posting all last year for 0.5 multilegal learner teacher. And that position wasn't, wasn't able to be filled with lack of candidates. And then we were able to reassign some of the work of qualified staff members to high school. Where now there are teaching Italian and then also part-time MLL, multilegal learner, that's a new acronym. Yeah, so if, if you wanted, the concentration would appear at the Appschuas School because that's where we, you know, the entire district's students who qualify get transported there.
I could just speak to, at the county level, we had been out, this is like last year, but almost every district has seen almost a double in their students. And it's increasing, and that's something that has come up now over the last two years. It has really raised its head for us here. So unfortunately, it's like, we went from like 14 to 50.
Yeah, pre-pandemic, our. We have. Pre-pandemic, we were, our numbers, we counted in the teens, steady increase, students qualified.
Okay, any other discussion? See, no roll call, please, Mr. Schultz?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain on 19, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes. Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I would like to move items 1 through 20 and 22 through 74 under Personnel.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I, I have, wait, one more? Table 21, okay, that's right. Okay, I, I have several questions. First of all, I'm very upset that we're losing a STEM teacher in math and in, yeah, STEM teacher and a math teacher at Macapin. Were those resignations because of moving or getting other jobs? Both, okay. And number 50, on the Homework Committee. This has been going on for at least three to four years. What's the movement on this? How much success has been? In other words, what's going on? Because we haven't heard anything. Report card, report card, that's what I meant, Report Card Committee. It's been three to four years, and we haven't gotten a report about it yet.
About the Report Card Committee? So in, in terms of what they've, what they've accomplished?
Yes.
Okay, so the Report Card Committee has been, they typically meet in the summer. Sometimes they get together during the school year. This is a K-5 committee.
Right.
So what?
Can we see something?
Well, we, I mean, yes, we do, we have changes every year. They meet to discuss changes based on the implementation that we have. Just for examples, over the year, when we shifted from a four marking period school year to trimester, the Report Card Committee met to look at, you know, what those timeframes would be, how the calendar works out, what, what, you know, because now you have a shorter time period. You know, at the end of the first marking period is typically around Thanksgiving. Now the end of the first trimester is more like mid-December. So now you have to align the types of things you're assessing students on in a longer period of time. So that's just one example. One year, we met to add our benchmark assessment, letter grade, you know, letter reading level to the Report Card.
So this committee is ongoing? It's just, it keeps going and going?
Well, it's kind of as, as needed. So the, the reason it's so valuable this summer is that the standards are changing for implementation, starting September for ELA and math. We also have two new programs that don't match current indicators on the K-5 Report Card. So this summer's process is extremely important. And the document I shared with everyone at Ed Committee, you know, when we start talking about committees and clubs or committees and curriculum writing, we prepared information for everyone with exactly what the committee's goal was, what their activities would be, what the expected outcome would be. So for this particular committee in the, in the notes, the expected outcome is a revised Report Card. And we have a deadline with real time for July, the end of July. So the committee will be meeting within the next two weeks to make sure that we meet the real time deadline so that we can have a new Report Card in place for, for September.
Yeah, I have another, another question. I don't know if this is a question or a statement. But I noticed in items 52 and 53, we have the middle school counselor who's going to the high school, who hasn't been there yet, working on the high school handbook. And the high school person who hasn't been at Macapin yet is working on the Macapin yearbook. Wouldn't it make more sense to put those people where they have their expertise?
That's a statement.
That's a statement?
Yeah.
Oh.
You started what I noticed. You're the ELA teacher. Been a while.
So part of. It is a question. So part of the reason that, you know, now that, that the staff members have been transferred, we want to make sure that they have, you know, they're able to participate and immerse themselves into any of the changes that they're going to have to implement when they begin in the new school. So, I'm sorry? How would they know? Well, because, they're going to need to know sometime rather than hit the ground running. So if they're part of the development of the handbook, and, you know, that's part, part of this is team building and sharing their expertise.
And they're not working in isolation.
Right.
They're working with the, the principal and the guidance supervisor.
All right, and now I have another question. On number 57, artificial intelligence. Shouldn't this be a professional development day for our entire staff led by professionals?
Yes.
So then, then why are we limiting it to?
Well, there's, there's a purpose for this, for this group getting together, and it's to talk about potential, I don't want to use the word policy, because I think in this room, when we say policy, it means something different than when we're, our teachers are in the hallway talking about policy. So we're talking about guidelines, and I think one of the major discussions of this is tools like ChatGPT, where a student can read a paper, you know, using artificial intelligence. So this committee is getting together to talk about types of things that we need and the types of things that we're going to implement.
So they're going to bring it back to the entire staff?
Eventually, when we know, because there's also, there's a, I'm going to yield to the Dr. Kitchen, like, probably going to be a policy discussion on the board end, for what artificial intelligence means for our schools. And it's something that Dr. Kitchen and I are actually attending in mid-July, is an artificial intelligence conference that's hosted by all of the leaders, you know, leadership group in the state of New Jersey, to find out exactly what all school districts are doing in terms of how to, how to monitor and how to implement artificial intelligence. It has tremendous benefit, and we have to embrace it and do it safely. There's also downside of technology. But I think that's what this group is, is working on. And I have been speaking with Mrs. West in terms of scheduling for this, to wait until we bring information back to the district from this large statewide event, to help inform what this group does.
And finally?
Can I just ask something onto that? The committee is, is there a reason why it's only two people? Was it only open to two, or only two signed up?
I give them, I give them guidelines, and I ask for fiscal responsibility. So I think Mrs. West chose a group, you know, that could meet the goals of, you know, that particular group.
Okay. And one last thing. I'd like to table number sixty-five and sixty-six. I'd like to bring that back to committee for discussion, because I have, I have some questions about position that's on there. Looks like it might be a double-dipping situation. So... Yeah, I'd like to move...
To make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table sixty-five and sixty-six, to bring it back to committee for discussion.
I'll second that.
Before we vote on it, I'm not sure we all get the same, there's nothing, I'm just going to start the reading, nothing that's going to happen this summer, right?
No. No. Right.
This is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Right.
For both. Okay, so I have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor?
Hang on, one second, I just look through.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Can take a minute. Let me know when you're ready. Mrs. Romeo?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have another meeting before that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to, actually, if I can speak for a second, to add on to that.
Sure.
You know how I feel about some of the things here. You know, we're spending, not only in the clubs, but in the sports as well. I mean, I'd like to see if we can't get a, I want to have a master list of what we have out there, and an idea of who, of how many students participated in all the clubs. And I know, Dr. Fenari, you and I spoke last time about, it's important to have clubs for the, for the kids when they're, to make them feel part of the community and do things like this. I'm not disagreeing with that at all, but I just would like to know, so we have an idea where the money is being spent, and if we can combine things or move things around a little bit. But I think that goes along with, I know we had, we had some numbers with the sports as well, but get a thirty thousand-foot view, look at it for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as opposed to this meeting we're talking about, fall sports, you know, another meeting in September, October, we'll talk about winter sports, and just to get a real picture of what happens, along with the clubs, to see if there is times that things are being used, and when they're being used, and to make sure that, that we're spending money wisely, and making sure the kids also have the services and activities that they should have.
Thank you, Mr. Lippie. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to table sixty-five and sixty-six that was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Dwyer?
I'm done.
You're done? Any other discussion? Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yeah, I just want to remember. I, I just want to comment on the retirement of Dean Monty. Dean Monty's been with our district for, I don't know how many years, to be honest, and I just want to wish him well on his retirement.
Any other discussion? Yeah, we can clap on that. Mrs. Romeo?
I have two things. One, Mr. Doherty, I just want to thank our volunteer, the Heroes and Cool Kids Program, as we heard tonight, is a great program, not just, you know, for both. I love to see peer-to-peer programs and cross-age teaching, and as of right now, it's the only one I know of in our district. And it's been successful for a long time, and, and I don't know Mr. Doherty, but I've seen him when I was on the, when I was the representative for the WMA, and he knows those kids well, you can tell. I just want to say thank you to him for volunteering. And the second thing, I know that we'll probably be able to talk about number eight in a minute, but just a real congratulations to Mr. Podi. I'm very happy, and was really excited when I saw her name on the agenda. So I know I always question, who's on the committee, and who's doing the interviewing, and are you doing it right? And, look, I don't know that you could have, I don't even know who was on the interview committee, I don't know who you interviewed, but I've seen Krista from afar for many, many years, and the way that her strength and her care for our students is unmeasurable. And I think that the high school is very lucky. And I think that she's going to work great with, with the guys, and I'm excited for all of them. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, I think she's going to fit really good. Thank you for whoever put that on the agenda.
You know, I'm glad you said what you said, Kate, about the Heroes and Cool Kids and about Don Darkody. I also want to thank...
I knew I was saying this name wrong.
It's Doc, Don Darkody, yeah, that's fine. He knew who you were talking to. I, I want to thank Debbie O'Brien, because she has been instrumental in bringing some wonderful programs into this district as the Municipal Alliance Coordinator, and working with her on the Alliance. Having been the coordinator years and years ago, this is not an easy task, and the amount of grants that are out there, she has really, she has really focused in on, on helping our, our kids. And that program and the new program at Macapin, I, I can't even tell you, I got to be there the day that they got the check, and the kids that are participating are just wonderful. I wish everybody could see, they're just so dedicated, and they're so caring, and I just want to say thank you to her for all that hard work. And I also reiterate that we are very excited about Krista coming to the high school, and I know that you're going to be a great member of the team there. So congratulations, even though the vote hasn't happened.
Linda, I'm sorry, can you clarify what you said? You were there the day they got you?
As, as the Alliance representative, they invited me to come when Atlantic Health presented the check at Macapin. So I got to be there, and I got to talk to some of the students who are involved in the Heroes and Cool Kids, because I, I've known the program, but I've never seen the kid, I really, I'm not in the classroom, so I don't, and I, I just was so excited, because just talking with them was, you know, you could tell that they're in the right spot, and they're helping our kids. And I know from past history, from my, my grandson, he really enjoyed that program in the elementary building, so it is, and I'm excited about the students from Macapin now with the fourth grade. I think this is a great way of building, so that that's going to make a good transition to Macapin for some of, for our students to see these kids and know that, you know, they're going to be there with them soon. So I, I just, and it's important, that we're so supported from the Municipal Alliance. So I would just want to thank.
Any other discussion? Seeing non-roll call please, Mr. Schultz?
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on sixty-nine and yes on the rest.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I recuse on forty-nine and yes on everything else.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No, on number fifty-four, sixty-eight, and seventy-one, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Lockwood?
I'm going to abstain on sixty-nine and seventy, and yes to everything else. Oh, really?
Claire, what did you say, sixty-eight or sixty-one?
Hmm. I have them. Who else said sixty-nine?
Mrs. Van Dyke abstaining on number sixty-nine.
My daughter is on sixty-nine. I said sixty-nine, not seventy.
Claire, are you relieved?
So wait, actually, why don't we ask the question, there's somebody specific on sixty-nine that you're objecting to?
Yes. No, I'm not objecting, but I can't, oh. I gave birth to her, so I can't object to her.
I don't get it. Maybe, maybe not.
There's no one that I'm related to, so...
No, actually, but if you're, if you're, if you're abstaining, it's a different, he wants to abstain, I'm okay if you just identify in the minutes who you're abstaining, and then everybody gets five votes, and we're good.
Okay, I'm abstaining to Jessica Cohen.
And who else is abstaining on sixty-nine?
What did that tell you?
Kate, you're abstaining?
No, because we're on the five.
Okay, me. So just me? Oh, because, yeah, because we've got two. And we need five. So I'm just abstaining from Mr. Monacelli. Michael Monacelli. Should I pass this? Okay.
Did they both pass?
Yes, they both passed.
Well, that ends my report.
Oh, boy. Telling you, it's been a night. Could I just make one statement about? Yes. Okay. Well, are we going to, shall we invite? So Krista, can, Krista, can Dr. Fenari just say one thing?
Sure.
Thank you.
While she's not here this evening, I just want to congratulate Kathryn Blades, who will be our new supervisor of special services. Dr. Ressa and his team really did a wonderful job in going through many rounds of interviews, and based on all of the recommendations that we received, we think we've got a really great new team member to join West Milford, so just wanted to congratulate her.
Good evening. I first want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Fenari, Mr. Strians, and the Interview Committee for this opportunity, putting your trust in me with this position. I would also like to thank my family, who has always supported me and encouraged me to never give up, and encouraged, and always supported me and encouraged me to never give up. My mom is in the audience with me tonight, and my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, and nieces, who are in the school district here in West Milford, are at home watching. I would also like to thank all my colleagues, past and present, a couple of them are here tonight, who have worked with me through the years, and who have helped me to become the educator I am today. For those who do not know me, I am Krista Chipodi, and I'm a lifelong resident of West Milford. I am also a product of the West Milford school system. For the past nine years, I have been a special education right here at Macape Middle School, and prior to that, I taught for seven years in North Island as a special education teacher. For the past eighteen years, I have also been the Head of our City Cheerleading Coach at West Milford High School. West Milford is my home, and this is where I belong, and it has always been where I wanted to teach and grow as a educator. So being able to return to the high school that I graduated from in 2001 is an absolute honor. I am invested in what is best for the students and children of West Milford, and I am excited for this next step in working with the students and staff of West Milford High School. So thank you again, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations, Mr. Chipodi.
Moving on, Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippie?
Yeah, let's move forward, Operations and Finance, number one, two, three. Sixty-nine, second.
Any discussion? Seeing non, I know Kate's still looking through our thing. Seeing non, roll call please?
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Oh, I did have one question. Can I ask it, so? Number sixty-six, the health incentives program, does that mean that they don't use the health benefits?
Yes, correct. Yeah, they opted out of the health benefits. There was a big motion, I believe it was last month, where he approved everyone, and this was one who turned it around.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, is there only one on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, your turn.
I'd like to move for vote number seventy on Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call please?
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Recuse.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Lippie?
Okay, I'd move Operations and Finance, number seventy-one to seventy-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call please?
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, policy.
One and two under policy.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call please?
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
I move the next one. Yeah, I'd like to move number one under negotiations.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call please?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mr. Satovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, committee reports, Parks and Rec, Mrs. Dwyer?
Um, they're passing to the meeting.
See?
If there is a meeting scheduled for next week.
Okay. Maybe I'll have something next month. Mrs. Ricano, Mrs. Dwyer, safety? Nothing for Superintendent's Roundtable, right, Mrs. Van Dyke? Yep, no meetings. Passaic County School Boards Association, the next meeting is September twenty-fifth, they just announced, it's going to be at Mario's Restaurant in Clifton. All these new places. There was a meeting where they announced the, well, the Passaic County Teacher of the Year came to speak, the New Jersey Superintendent of the Year came to speak, there was a presentation of the board certifications for Clifton. The whole board got certified. They passed the adoption of the revised bylaws. There was also a presentation of the Milestone Awards and Board Member Academy certifications. And that was it, really, pretty, pretty quick meeting. That was for the Passaic County School Board meeting. New Jersey School Board meeting. Mr. Satovich, anything?
Thank you. So the first thing on this list, and this is to our point that I was expensive, is nomination for Board Member of the Year. So the first thing on this list, and this is to our point that I was expensive, is nomination for Board Member of the Year due by July first. The second award is the School Leaders Award, and each year, the School Leader Awards showcase creative and effective programs and practices from New Jersey schools. If your school hasn't knew an innovative education program that adjusts its student learning and achievement, the New Jersey School Boards Association wants to hear from you. Henry must be received by four thirty P.M., July 2024. Opportunity for school leaders interested in social and emotional learning to take part in the focus group. So the New Jersey Department of Education, in collaboration with the Social, Emotional, and Character Development Lab at Rutgers University, is in the process of developing a statewide training series for school leaders on implementing systemic SEL in school. This asynchronous SEL leadership course will include five modules, each one and a half hours in length, and once finalized, the course will be available for all current and aspiring school leaders via a virtual platform. And the next thing I'm gonna say, to shorten up, Dwyer, is that, uh, if you'd like to participate in that, I could provide you the link from the New Jersey School Boards Association website, and they will direct you to the NJDOE forum to participate in that program. Workshop twenty-two.
Hang on. I'm sorry, I have a question.
That scared the heck out of me.
Really fast, number one. Number two, I just have a question. The first two things that you said is July first, Board Member of the Year, and July eighth?
For the School Leaders Award.
And who can nominate people, anyone?
Uh, yes, um, for any of those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For workshop twenty-two, the early bird special rate will be provided until June thirtieth. I'm not sure we'll make that cutoff date, but I just needed to present that, and that is my NJSBK report leading to the legislative report. Uh, just dropping a seed planting here. Uh, at some point, I'd like for us to consider changing the name of it from Legislative to Government Relations, seeing as the legislative branch of our government doesn't meet as often as, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm not gonna go on that one. But really, uh, when we talk about these topics, we don't just discuss the legislature, we could talk about the Department of Education, we'll talk about the government action, or the governor's actions, so I think Government Relations is more a, an appropriate name for that.
Well, in order to do that, you would have to change the bylaws, right?
Yeah.
So why don't you just put it on the agenda for July or August, um, Policy Committee to look over the bylaws so that you can change that, because we have less going on in July and August anyway.
Well, you're, you're the policy chair.
You're the policy guy, just put it on the agenda.
It's on me. Put it on the agenda, Mr. Schultz.
There you go.
So on the twelfth of June, uh, the governor called for an artificial intelligence moonshot to be established in New Jersey as a pioneering state for artificial intelligence-powered innovation. The New Jersey Department of Education announced that it is providing school districts with resources to help educators understand, prepare for, implement, and manage AI in the school setting. On the twentieth, uh, the legislature had action. New Jersey is one of, uh, one of just a handful of states that does not have legislation outlining how children should be taught to read. But this could change soon, as a bill that would require universal literacy screenings for elementary school students and professional development teachers cleared its first committee Thursday, June twenty. The bill would establish a working group on student literacy that would recommend best practices to the State Department of Education. Its prime sponsors are Senate Majority Leader Teresa Brusis, the Democrat from Essex, and Senate Education Committee Chair, Senator Van Goghle, Democrat from Monmouth. It cleared the Senate Education Committee unanimously and had widespread support from groups representing students with learning disabilities, teachers, and school administrators, and I will update you if that makes further progress in the legislature. And that is my report.
Thank you. Technology Oversight, Mr. Lippi. I heard you didn't have a meeting. Um, Township Board of Education Joint Committee, there's nothing to report, no meeting there.
I suppose that the thank you would be, uh, should be extended to the township who are applying for these grants that are going to enable this joint effort to work out, so I think that, uh, we've collectively done things that in the past haven't happened before, so thank you for that.
I agree. Thank you to the township for, um, you know, providing those lights and applying for these grants and thinking of this. For sure. And then West Milford Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Van Dyke, um, so I was not here. So, so I did actually go to the meeting, um, so it was June eleventh. And the next meeting is July eighth, let me just say that, seven P.M. at the library, it's hybrid. Uh, so they talked about a survey that would be going out to the community in regards to how the funds would be utilized for the opioid settlement. Um, I know that that's been talked about in the past. They gave an update on the Scotts Fund Run, um, the movie Angst, which I know they showed at, um, the Highlander Success Center, got a great review. They talked about the Junior Police Academy, which I think is amazing that this town is running that. I'm kinda sad my kids are too old for that now, 'cause that would have been something that they would have loved. Um, the Hike for Hope, which I believe just took place this weekend. Um, they talked about the Team Summit, which we heard the update on that from Mr. Trent Acosta and, uh, Mrs. O'Brien. Talked about the winner of the PSA con- contest, Alf, um, you know, that, I guess they're just discussing whether they'll have a table at Alf. And then just tried to talk about more opportunities to fundraise, to get more money, so, um, that was West Milford Municipal Alliance and the CPAC, no meeting for that either. So that closes, um, committee reports, and we can move on to old business. Anyone have any old business?
I do. Yeah? Oh, you were looking to close. Um, just a question, if there's an update on the, um, realities of the Highlander Education Foundation? I've received no emails, I've been reading the, um, anything?
Or?
For board membership of the Highlander Education Foundation, we talked about it at the last meeting?
Botox contract.
Old business?
Honestly, I need to go back and check, I thought it was in the search and sent it, but I don't know.
Okay. If it was sent, it didn't make its way to me, so, um, okay. It's okay, uh, just, I guess, reminding us that that's important, um, because I'll go into new business, which, if you don't mind, it's the same item, um, because.
Old business, can't go, can't go into business until we're done with old business.
Well, then I was, okay.
But you can, as soon as we're done with old business. Any other, do you have anything else for old business?
No, I was just gonna talk about the exact same thing, the Highlander Education Foundation had their big fundraiser this weekend. Um, and it was amazing. Um, it was really nice to see, you know, supporters there, it was nice to see the kids having a good time. The food trucks were plentiful, I couldn't even count how many, the vans were good, um, and I helped put the food, for the food pantry into the cart, and it just kept coming and coming and getting coming, so that was really cool. Um, just all of it was wonderful, and, um, I hope they do it again next year.
I, I have something. Um, I'm just curious about something. Did we have boys' state and girls' state this year? Does anybody know if any of our kids went, the boys' state or girls' state?
Isn't that something that's usually done through the, like, the American Legion and that? I, I don't remember hearing about it.
I didn't hear anything this year, that's why usually we have, usually we compliment the kids that go, and I haven't seen anything, so I was just wondering.
Is there, they're elected roles? I don't believe we had.
We didn't have anybody, oh. They apply. It's too bad. Okay, thank you.
Any other old business?
Yes, I have one last thing. Um, I was wondering if someone, somewhere, somehow, could define for us what it means to become a certified board. So I've heard about this, becoming a certified board for six years now, um, and I was just hoping that there's like a document somewhere that, there is?
Yeah, and it takes a lot, it's a lot of commitment of hours, um, I'm sure. Mr. Satovich, like, I think they spoke to it there, I wanna say that it's a, I, I know it's a lot, I, for some reason, seventy-five, a hundred is, is sticking out to me, um, but I know it takes a significant amount of time, too. It's not something that's just done within a couple of months, something that, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Over a period of time.
And I think it has to be the majority of the board, correct?
Correct, and typically, oh, Mr. Sarg, what do you have to say about it? Um, typically, we have a board that's consistently, uh, going to be together, so.
You just said your own name.
That's something that'll kind of allow you to approach that opportunity, because you have to have a certain amount of dedicated joint, uh, hours of training. And you have to have a full board retreat, and you have to make sure that everybody is trained and honored and honored. But it is a great goal, whether or not you achieve it or not, just to try to build the cohesiveness of a board and to build your commitment to professional development on your own accord, to, uh, contribute to the board and all the roles that we serve, uh, our community, so.
And I know that you've brought that up before, which is why it's okay to speak of it in old business, um, but we could, I mean, we have a board retreat scheduled, so we could definitely discuss it there.
Talk to her at the meeting.
That's one of the things we could discuss there, yes, otherwise.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other old business? Seeing none?
Move to, move, close all the business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Mr. Satovich?
In anticipation for Thursday, I'm not gonna be too objective on it, but it's looking like this is a, a last thing on, on something that feels crucial to help not bridge the financial gap as much as it is to build, to bridge the academic gap that was caused by the state accelerating the, uh, state formula for full funding. As noble as that goal was, it really left us and other school districts in deficit because of how accelerated, uh, that tax burden became on our tax base. Uh, this is a, is not a golden opportunity by any means, because I can't help but think of our fixed income residents and those who are gonna suffer as a result from it, but I really feel strongly after really firmly considering it, and I just wanted to also thank, uh, Dr. Fenari and Mr. Schultz on their quick, and, uh, Mr. Nova had on their quick answers to my questions in order to justify in my head why it's probably appropriate to increase the tax base, um, one more time. So for those that asked me along the way what my thoughts are, those are the start of my thoughts, and I promise I'm gonna keep twenty minutes speech on Thursday.
Well, for those watching at home, Mr. C, what's Thursday night?
Thursday night, we have a special meeting in which we are given the opportunity to further increase the general tax levy on our residents uh, in order to supplement the gap that was created by our state aid funding laws. So I hope that anybody who has ears and who's watching and who participates actively in their communities pays attention and comes out to either speak for or against the property tax levy, because deciding this in a bubble isn't, you know, fair to them. But, um, it's a crucial issue, and I think that this is a huge measure in making sure that academically we fill that gap, and from the budget presentation, eighty percent of it, eighty percent of that budget is claimed by salaries and benefits, and that twenty percent that's dedicated to programming and everything else is less and less contributed to academic programs and expanding things that we as a board have asked for, the math programming that we've asked for, and the after-school curricular activities that we've asked for. We can't sustain that with even the tax levy that we presented in April. So my hope is that there's, uh, some sentiment towards that, and that we have a vigorous discussion and that there's a community present to also participate in that.
Well said. Anyone else?
Well, I think, I, I think back on what Will said, I, I'm not actually sure where we're going with this. Um, I maybe floated out to the public that there is a major concern that this is a one-shot deal, and after the punishment that West Milford took on the state aid cuts, not knowing a formula moving forward, is, the, the state has put us in a very bad position, and they're asking each one of us to have a crystal ball so that we can see ahead to what's gonna happen for our district going forward. So I think it is really important that people come out, if they can, to, to at least hear what we're talking about with the budget, and also get a, get an understanding, because it, it's not like, oh, we're gonna take that money and we're gonna spend it tomorrow, but we need to build our base, because they have taken away from our base so much. So I, 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 I'm not advocating that we, you know, increase our taxes by four million dollars or whatever. I think we need to have that discussion, and I think it's really important that the taxpayers understand why we're having the discussion and how we've been kind of backed into a corner to try and fix some of what they broke. So, um, I'm glad you brought it up, and I'm looking very much forward to Thursday night's meeting to have that discussion for everybody, to hear all sides of the argument, but that, again, as a board of education, we wanna make sure that we can give the students of West Milford the best education we possibly can, especially not knowing what's gonna happen to our state aid next year. And we did have a cut in our, um, funding, didn't we?
Yeah.
That we were promised, we, we were expecting a certain amount, and we lost almost two hundred thousand dollars, right? So I think that's important, that the public know that they're taking, they're, they're giving it in one hand and taking it out in another.
And that meeting is at seven o'clock, just to clarify the time. Anyone else?
I have something. Um, we had a speaker tonight about, um, about the bullying situation, and, um, I just wanted to say two things. One, West Milford is not any different than anywhere else. I think that bullying is a problem amongst children in our society, um, and, um, the second thing I wanted to say is, it, I would really like to see and would support, um, a committee that is looking to praise the upstander. Um, there used to be, and maybe this is something principals can each individually work on this summer, research, but I don't know if this program's still out there, but at the high school level, we had, um, the Jets, the football team, if there was an upstander, if someone reported something and acted violence or prevented something, um, their school principal reported them, and the Jets gave a T-shirt and two tickets to the next game. Um, and I don't want, I don't think that kids reported things to get those Jets tickets. I think they reported them to keep a safe school. And, um, I, I personally know that it's important for those kids that are reporting, that are coming to their counselor and saying, hey, two kids just talked about fighting, you know, and they're talking about fighting on the way to the bus, or they talk, that kid needs to be praised, you know? And I've seen many times in, in our district that not happening. And, um, I happen to work in a middle school this year where the upstanders were given every time an act of something like that, their names were put into a jar, and at the end of the, um, month, or the end of the marking period, however they run it, they pick their names, and those kids get to pick out of the gift cards left in the case. So it's a Dunkin' Donuts gift card, or. So it's a Dunkin' Donuts gift card, or gift card to Dairy Queen. So acts of kindness can go in at upstanders. Like, we need programs where we're praising the kids that, that do stop bullying, you know? Not necessarily the team, and some of that stuff sounds, you know, but there are kids out there that do the right thing. And I don't want to say that we're not praising them, or we're not, because I don't know what we're doing. But I know that we don't have, at least nothing that's ever come across my desk, of a program where their, you know, kindness and upstanders are, you know, picked out of a jar, or something like that. So there are, I could go on and on and on and on and on. There are so many things that we can do, rather than always focus on negative things, you know, the discipline of the kids that do get in a fight. Well, maybe that fight didn't happen because somebody helped prevent it, you know, and maybe they were then, they went through mediation, or whatever it is, is that those things go unnoticed. And I just wanted to piggyback off the speaker and say, you know, yeah, bullying's an issue, you know? And my time here, in this seat, we've done a lot of work as a board to discuss it, to work our hardest, I mean, hours of putting in and discussing how to not, you know, like people say, sweep things under the rug, how to make sure and hold accountable that our kids are being taught the right things, you know? And I know that our hearts are in the right place as a board, and I know this administration wants to do the right thing. So I just can't have a speaker about bullying and not put in my two cents in that, you know, I don't know that it's something with a magic wand that you can just fix. And personally, I've read the newspaper, I don't know if that ever came across my desk. You know, we get to vote on the information that we are given, and it just sometimes doesn't always match up. So that's another really important piece to this entire thing, which is, if it's not reported, there's nothing this school can do. And so I don't know specifics of anything, I'm just being very broad in that, you know, if your child is being bullied, or if you know a child is being bullied, you have to put trust in the school administrators and the bully, anti-bullying specialists, to do their job, and then to this board to vote the right way on what we are presented. So I just wanted to comment on that, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. Mr. Satovich?
I promise this is my last comment for this four-year. I've said the same thing, almost the same vein every time, for every year I've been on the board. From the time the lights go on in the morning to the time the lights go off, this place is a hive of amazing activity, where you know that education is the full intent of professionals that are here. I'd like to thank my colleagues, I'd like to thank the tried and true members of our audience that come out to form a capacity crowd every time. I thank you to all the supporting staff that make all these things happen. The further you think about the ins and outs of just keeping the joint clean, it's really incredible. Thank you to the administrators that we get to see at every meeting. You have been very, very professional in everything that you do, the responses are quick, you're thorough. Dr. Fenari, thank you so much for leading this brigade this year. I love the fact that you carry a notebook. I am a this guy, and I know that once that pen is out of that paper, it's going to be followed up on. I really appreciate everything you've done to keep the charge of the strategic plan, and may the future of your retirement be everything that you hope for. And Dr. Kitchen, I look forward to working with you in a week's time, so thank you all.
Less than a week.
Dr. Fenari, are you here on Thursday? Oh, great. I thought it was five, she told me earlier, three days. Thursday falls.
That's it.
That's it.
Move to closed on business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment. So all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of thirty minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and get their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Move to closed on business.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So executive session. So at nine forty PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, current litigation matters, negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately thirty minutes. Action will not be taken, so we will be adjourned in from executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.